Welcome to How School Boards Impact Us All, a program of the League of Women Voters of Bucks County. A few facts about school boards. There are 501 public school districts in Pennsylvania, 13 in Bucks County alone, each with nine elected school board directors. Registered voters in each district elect representatives to their school board. However, the responsibility for public education in Pennsylvania resides with the General Assembly. Although elected locally, school board directors are state officials. They are volunteers. There is no remuneration for their service. School board directors are on the ballot in 2023, and as early as this May, voters will be making an important choice that will impact not just students, but the whole community for the next four years. School boards are elected as part of municipal elections. In Bucks County, these primaries attract as few as 15% to 26% of registered voters, and only about 40% of voters take part in the municipal general election. As you will hear, many candidates are eliminated at the municipal primary. Our goal today is to urge you to take part in this critically important election. Educate yourself about the candidates and vote in the primary on May 16th and the general election on November 7th. Just a few words about the League of Women Voters. The League is a 103-year-old organization founded to empower voters and defend democracy. We are nonpartisan, which means we never support or oppose any party or candidate, but we do study important issues and take positions based on the consensus of our members. We then advocate for our positions and lobby our legislators on both sides of the aisle to support them. Issues are not partisan. The League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania first took a position on education in 1975, and it has been updated many times since then. It covers many aspects of education and can be found on the League's website. In brief, the Pennsylvania League's education position says that "we support equal access to quality public education to be achieved by participation of government and citizens at all levels and by adequate financing based on an equitable and flexible tax system." Before introducing our panelists, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the original indigenous peoples who owned the land that makes up Pennsylvania prior to the colonial boundaries that were first drawn in 1681. We honor the Hodenno-Shawnee Confederacy and name the great nations here: the Erie, Iroquois, Muncie Delaware, Shawnee, Ohio Valley, Susquehannock, and Lenape. We honor all original nations of the past and those among us today. We also want to give webinar participants some information about how they can participate in this webinar. League member and Zoom host Barbara O'Donnell will provide an overview. Barbara?
Thank you so much, Kathy, and good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to give you a quick overview of the Zoom webinar tools. Hover your cursor over the lower portion of your screen to view the Zoom toolbar. If you don't see one of the options I described, click on the ellipsis, which is at the right of the toolbar, the three dots over the word "more." You'll be able to see those additional options. We've enabled the closed caption live transcript feature for today's program. We hope this is useful, but if you'd rather not see the captions, go to the toolbar, click on the little box with the CC in it, and choose to disable the feature. The captions tend to appear at the bottom of your screen, but you can click on the captions box itself and drag it to another location if you prefer. You, the viewers of this webinar, will not be seen or heard during this program. In a Zoom webinar, participants are not visible, and they engage in the discussion through Q and A. We encourage you to engage in our discussion using the questions and answers, the Q and A. Hover over your toolbar, click on Q and A, and type in your question. If you like, feel free to indicate in parentheses the name of the panelist you'd like to answer the question. We will try to answer as many questions as possible after the panelists make their presentations. Please be sure to type your questions in the Q and A and not in the chat. We are only using the chat this evening to share some supplemental information with you, like websites and documents provided by our panelists. You can copy them from the chat window and paste them into a Word document so you can visit those sites after the webinar. Thank you so much for joining us this evening, and we hope you'll enjoy the presentation. Back to you, Kathy.
Hey, thank you, Barbara. This evening, four panelists will help us understand what school boards do, how they are elected, and how they affect all members of the community well beyond the immediate school community. I'm excited to welcome our panelists for this discussion. Susan Spicka is the Executive Director of Education Voters of Pennsylvania, a statewide nonprofit, nonpartisan policy and advocacy organization that advocates for sound education policy. She works to build the public will to ensure that support for quality public education is a top priority for key decision-makers. Susan taught English in a high school with a high number of economically disadvantaged students in Columbus, Ohio. She served one term on her local school board. Susan holds a BA in Classics from the University of Wisconsin-Madison and an MA in Ancient Greek and a Master's in English Education from the Ohio State University. Jennifer Hoff has been elected School Board Director of the William Penn School District since 2007, and until recently was a Pennsylvania School Board Association Advocacy Ambassador. As a parent, homeowner, and business owner in Lansdowne, Pennsylvania, Jennifer understands the important role a quality school system plays in local economic development. Her company, Hoff Communications, is a highly versatile web graphic design and public relations social media company based in Lansdowne. Dr. Ziad Munson is Professor of Sociology and Chair of the Sociology and Anthropology Department at Lehigh University. He received his BA from the University of Chicago in 1993 and his PhD from Harvard University in 2002. He currently lives in Emmaus, Pennsylvania with his wife and two children, and served as a school director in the East Penn School District from 2014 to 2022. Ziad's professional research and teaching focuses on social movement activism. He has written two books and more than a dozen articles on social movements, religion, terrorism, and civil society. He is currently working on a study of the political changes taking place in America's suburbs. Kate Nizimi has a long history of advocating for public education, women's rights, LGBTQ+ rights, voting rights, and gun violence prevention. Most recently, with two children in Central Bucks Schools, Kate co-founded Advocates for Inclusive Education, a coalition of parents, students, educators, residents, and community groups, organizing to fight against harmful school board policies. Professionally, Kate has more than 17 years of design and communications experience, having worked with Harvard University, the James A. Michener Art Museum, and MIT. She was also on the Design Faculty of Massachusetts College of Art and Design, where she received her MFA in 2005. Each panelist will present information, then we will entertain questions that are placed in the Q and A box. Feel free to place your questions in the Q and A as you think of them throughout these presentations. We will begin with Susan Spicka. Susan will be talking about how school directors are elected. Susan?
Hi there. Thank you. And I just want to say, if you're here, you want to stay to the end because this is a great panel. Everybody who's speaking is really excellent in their field. So, in Pennsylvania, we elect school board members twice every four years. So, in odd-numbered years, when we have municipal elections, we'll elect five school board members typically from a school board, and then the next odd-numbered year, we'll elect four school board numbers. To get your name on the ballot as a school board member is pretty easy. You just need to go to your county municipal elections office and pick up a petition and then get 10 signatures. So, it is pretty easy to get your name on the ballot. Now, school board elections are nonpartisan in Pennsylvania. So, when people collect signatures to get their name on the ballot, they can collect signatures to appear on a primary ballot, both as a Republican and as a Democrat, regardless of their party. So, if I am a registered Republican, I can collect 10 signatures for myself from people who are in my same party, and then I can find someone else who is in the different party, a Democrat, to collect 10 signatures from Democrats. I take my signatures on my petitions. I go to the county elections office. I submit them. And if they are correct, people have signed them correctly, and people, Democrats have signed Democratic petition, Republicans have signed a Republican petition, then my name will go on the ballot, both as a Democrat and a Republican. So, the thing that's really important with this cross-filing when you are the voter is to understand that when you go in and you see somebody's name on your ballot, because we have closed primaries, you only see people who are on your Democratic or Republican ballot, but the person whose name is there, that is not necessarily, they are not necessarily registered in the party that is on the ballot that you are viewing. So, it makes it incredibly important to do your research before you go into the polling place on Election Day for school board numbers to understand who you are voting for and to ensure that the person that you're voting for is someone who shares your values, because they may not be the same party that you are on the ballot. So, in this particular election, it's really going to be important because there are a lot of people running for school board, and there are people who have very different values, whose names are all going to be on the ballot. So, if you want to know who's running, you can go to your county elections office, go to their website, and most of them, I believe by now, have posted the names of all the people. They'll have something where you can click to see the names that'll be on the Republican ballot, the names that'll be on the Democratic ballot. You can look at both of those. And then you might have to just start doing some work, like sit down and Google people, go look on Facebook and find them, and see if you can figure out who these people are so that when you go in to vote, you can know who to vote for. And, you know, when you go in, you'll see how many people, when you look at the county elections information, it will tell you how many people you can vote for. Some school districts, you vote for people at large. So, you might have 10 people on a ballot, and you can vote for five people. Or sometimes, school districts divide their voting precincts into different sections. So, you might only be able to vote for one person because you might have only a section of your school district. So, really truly, like going to your elections office page and looking at this information and having that in your head before you go is important. And then, because this is such a low-turnout election, it is critically important not only that you vote, but that you talk to your friends and neighbors and other people who share your values, and you ask them to go vote too. If there are candidates that you want to see on your school board because you think that they will do what is right for kids, make sure you talk to your friends and neighbors and ask them to talk to their friends and neighbors. So, I ran for school board in 2015, and I won by four votes. And in 2019, I lost by 10. So, when people talk about, like, every vote matters, in these elections, it can come down to just like a tiny handful of votes. So, it really, really matters that you know who you're voting for and that you get a bunch of people to go out to go to the polls with you. Because as you're going to hear when we move on to our next speaker, we've all got a lot at stake in this election. So, signing off. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Let's continue with Jennifer Hoff. Jennifer will be talking about what school boards do and don't do. Jennifer?
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'll start by saying that being a school board director is, most days, my favorite job. Serving my community, serving the young people that live in my school district's six communities is a pleasure and an honor. I think that the first, you know, to prepare for this, I went and said, what are the things that I think school board directors do? And then I made some documents available from PSBA, the School Board Association of Pennsylvania, and they tell us and me what we should be doing. So, first, I'll go with what I believe we do the most, and then I'll refer to PSBA's documents. And I'll get to Ms. Ferguson's questions in the Q and A. The first job of a school board director is policy, and that's the range. That's all of it. What punitive things might look like for young people, curriculum, length of school year, personnel policy, school trip policy. There are policies, maybe 600 of them. There's a lot of them. So, those should be reviewed. I do believe, to Ms. Ferguson's point, that we should advocate. We should advocate for public education. We should advocate for our individual school districts. Now, in every community, a school board, that's going to look different. My school district has six specific communities. And as Susan said, I have half of one community, so about 5,000 citizens. And then, another person has the other half of my town. The next most important thing is fiduciary responsibility. It's our job to balance the budget, and it's a team of 10, nine school board directors and your superintendent. And balancing that budget probably is where the advocacy comes along for someone in a school district like mine of William Penn. But your budget will specify what's important to you, whether that's your home budget or your school budget. So, if you value, for instance, mental health services, you will budget for mental health services, et cetera. Sports, art, music, books, technology, all those things are in your budget, and it should delineate what is important to you and your school district. Presence. I believe that a school board director should be present. That means sports activities, arts activities, Career Day. Anytime that the school district is doing something, there should be a school director present. You know, you don't have to do anything, but you should be present. Partaking in school district activities, I think, is a very, very important part of being a school board director. I can't get to know the young people if I'm not invited to Career Day. If I go to sports games, the young people get used to seeing me there, and they're like, oh, I see you at the basketball game. I think it's really important to participate in your school district. And service to citizens. I have said, now, I've been doing this a while, but citizens will call me and say, you know, this tax bill didn't come, or this tax bill looks weird to me, or can you explain why you're spending X on mental health? Can you explain, you know, why we're busing 10 miles away? A lot of time is spent, you know, making sure that citizens understand, given our taxing structure, spending time with our older citizens and explaining the role we have in raising taxes and, you know, what they can do to advocate and join us to advocate for maybe a change in how we fund our public schools. So, that's what I think. PSBA adds to the mix of planning. We do, this is true, we plan for the future, we plan for the present, we plan for nightmares like COVID. And they come at you very, very quickly. And you have to, that team of nine should spend time doing retreats and doing education. Our school board, about every 12 to 18 months, does education, where we work together to understand new and different things. Hiring a superintendent is also the job of the team of nine, and that is exhaustive. In all cases, especially given that your average superintendent is staying about three years these days. That just adds to the meeting level. We could have, on a regular month, five to seven meetings a month. That is two business meetings, a property meeting, a budget meeting, a personnel meeting, sometimes a community relations, and I'm probably missing one. But it is pretty exhaustive. PSBA agrees. We should be legislating. I'll call that advocating. Empowering professional staff, that is making a school district that people want to work in even more important than, given today and the shortage of teachers in our state and in the nation. Making a job where they feel valued, are paid appropriately, and oftentimes, that falls on budget ears, and have, not even nice things, but things that make their job more doable and better for the students. When you make the teachers happy, the students' quality of life also gets better. I'm sorry, one more. Oh, empowering professional staff, and the last one, evaluating results. It is our job to see if that new curriculum works. It is our job to see if those funds you budgeted for mental health really helped young people. And I'm using mental health a lot because that's a pretty new one. We always, my school district, had three mental health clinics in their schools before COVID. It was hard for our adults to get their students to mental health care. The expense was a little punitive, and we found it worked better if we put mental health clinics in. So, three before COVID, now, an open-door mental health professional in every single building for students and adults. No appointment needed. Walk in. No matter what happened last night, you can walk in and talk to someone today. We cannot educate a student who can't process what's going on around them. And that's very, very important. But I also think it's a job that we're not particularly funded for coming out of COVID. You know, the CDC says mental health is best handled for youth in the schools, and they go, good, go do that. And it's not, you have to fund that, and it's pretty challenging. So, to Ms. Ferguson's question, what is the overarching job first and foremost? If I had to pick two, it would be policy and fiduciary oversight, because that should feed the rest, but I do need to pick two. So, I think that is all for me. It is a great job. The young people that I serve are amazing. And by doing it a longer period of time, I've got to know a lot of things and a lot of their families too. So, it's really been a nice ride. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll continue with Dr. Ziad Munson. As Ziad will be talking about why school boards matter to students, parents, and the community.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the invitation from the League of Women Voters to participate tonight, and it's great that so many people are here interested in the school board, because school boards really do matter. And I think oftentimes, they sort of fade into the background in many people's minds. They don't really know who's on the school board or why it matters that they're on the school board. I know that was me. I mean, I know that that's true of a lot of people because that was true of me for, you know, many of the few years when my kids were very little. And as I learned more about what the school board did, it made me more and more interested in getting involved, and that's why I ultimately volunteered to be a school board, a school director, as they call them in Pennsylvania, or a school board member. You know, I wanted to kind of divide my points about why they're important into three main areas. I mean, first, I think it's really important that people in the community, whether they're parents or seniors or, you know, business owners in the community, understand that school boards have a very real effect on the curriculum and educational materials in a particular school district. We have very small school districts, a very fragmented school district system here in Pennsylvania. So, that means there's, I think, the last time I looked, there are 500 different school districts, and all of them are, as Jennifer said, a team of 10, nine school board members and a superintendent that are determining different curricula and providing different educational materials to their students. I don't think I'm going to tell anyone anything they don't know when I point out that supplying all of these materials to public schools is a huge, multi-billion-dollar industry in the U.S. And so, there are lots and lots of salespeople and slick marketing that tries to get schools to purchase, you know, one set of curricula over another or the latest sort of slick technology. And it really is the school board's job to help the superintendent and the people who are working in the school sort through that and make sure that the district is getting the best possible materials in different areas. I mean, another way that this has become really important recently is that more and more, there are voices, and these are minority voices, but there's still voices in our communities that want to fight their culture wars and their partisan battles within school boards. And it really detracts from helping our public schools for everyone. And part of those battles are often trying to slant the curriculum in, you know, in particular ways, banning books, censoring books, banning, I actually just read, I guess this took place in Ohio, but there was, you know, a school board that intervened and essentially eliminated the Putnam County Spelling Bee play from being done at a public school, a public high school. And these are the kinds of negative things that can happen if we don't have high-quality folks in our school boards sort of making decisions not on the basis of partisan talking points, but actually, you know, for the benefit of everyone in the community and recognizing that we need curricula that serves everyone so that everyone can thrive in the public schools. You know, just to give you some examples from the eight years that I was a school board member of the kinds of consequential decisions that you have to make in this area. One of the big things that I was very involved in was shifting our school district from offering half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. It was a controversial, both discussion and decision, but we spent a lot of time looking at the evidence, looking at studies that showed the sort of pros and cons of this. And I'm very proud that we were able to institute full-day kindergarten in our school district. We also made very dramatic changes to the science curriculum. When I first got on the board in 2012, our science curriculum hadn't been updated since before the iPhone was invented, which is just a sort of indication of why you need school boards to be looking at this stuff regularly. And that was, you know, there were sweeping changes to that, not just in the textbooks that were used, but the sequencing of classes that students took, rethinking how primary, middle, and high school sort of are integrated together and so forth. So, that's really an important piece that has a direct impact on our kids. I think another reason that we should all care about the school boards in our local school districts is because the school board really has a pretty direct impact on a district's ability to attract high-quality teachers. As you may know, there is a teacher shortage in Pennsylvania. It reflects, but is even worse than the teacher shortage that we have nationwide. And that teacher shortage comes for a variety of reasons. But the reality is that different school districts pay different salaries and benefits to their teachers, and those have a real impact on where teachers want to go. If you want to be in a district that has the best teachers, you need to be, you know, part of a board that offers either salaries or benefits and a variety of other things that will make your district a district of choice for the few employees that these 500 districts all around the Commonwealth are, you know, are really competing for in some ways. In my own district, I'm in the Lehigh Valley of Pennsylvania, where we have 15 different school districts. My district is not the highest paying. It's not even in the top two or three of the most high-paying districts. But nonetheless, our district has But nonetheless, our, our district has been a district of choice for teachers and throughout the time that I was on the board. We regularly brought in teachers from other districts. Who were at the top of their game. They were energetic. They had. You know, great training, lots of experience, lots of expertise. But they just weren't being valued in some of the other districts and. Many of, much of their sense of where their value being devalued came from. School boards and school boards that would either collectively or have, you know, very vocal members that really, really denigrated them. Because one of the things that school districts. School boards do is they, they set policy, all kinds of policy, including policies for, you know, the, the. All of the things that teachers are going to do or not do within a district. And those policies can really impact the day to day work. Conditions of teachers and thus teacher morale within a district. So. That's, I, I think that that's really, really important. And it also is important whether or not a school district board treats their teachers like professionals with, you know, specialized expertise. Or if they treat their teachers like, you know, retail clerk workers that are just supposed to punch in and punch out and be told exactly. What to do. And so it really is important that boards. Are constituted by people that understand. The enormous amount of experience and training it takes. To teach well to the, the full diversity of students that we have in our public schools. And you know, the last thing, and, and this is the first thing that people think about. In terms of the effect that school boards have. It is on economics and particularly taxes. And one thing I would say is that while yes, there are school taxes in Pennsylvania and each school board sets local tax rates. One of the things I learned as a school board member was just how little. Total impact we had on taxes than I had originally thought. Because the, the, our state representatives in Harrisburg. Have lots of both direct and indirect effects on taxes as well. I mean, number one. In taxes in local districts are dependent in part on whether or not. The state is providing adequate funding for a particular district. And that it varies a lot in how much funding they provide year to year. Pennsylvania remains one of the only. Districts, excuse me, one of the only states in the entire United States. That does not have a consistent, well-defined funding formula for districts. And so districts hold their breath every year. The other way in which they impact what's taxes is. The, our representatives in Harrisburg love to. Love to pass new unfunded mandates, which are, you know, new rules and regulations that schools have to do. Often they're very, very expensive, but not actually provide the revenue that is needed to do them. And why this matters is because it is essentially a way for state representatives to raise taxes. But make the school board members be the fall guy for those taxes. And all of this is to say that. That yes, local school boards do have an impact on taxes. It matters. But there are some, there are some other forces that are often larger than the school board itself that are actually setting those taxes. But the other thing that really matters, and this matters not just to people in the schools. But it matters to any homeowner, any business owner in a district is that the quality of schools. In a district have been shown again and again to affect real estate values. If you have a strong school board supporting a strong district. You are able to maintain and increase real estate values, which is really important for seniors. For those who need to take loans out on, you know, to finance education and so forth. Just one, again, one small. Example from my own experience, when I first got on the school board, it was a couple of years after the 2008 recession. And I was startled by the fact that. The, the, a neighboring school district, which is smaller than ours, but similar in terms of its demographics. Their real estate, on average, their real estate values dropped in the reception. By 23%. And by contrast. The East Penn. Real estate values in the district that I was in. Only dropped 8%, right? Which is a really big difference in terms of. What impact that recession had. Now, of course, that's not all due to the schools, but it's a, it's a reflection. Of the fact that people really do look at the schools when they decide where to buy homes, where to move to. I know that's the very first question that my real estate asked us. When we moved to this area is about our kids, our attitudes towards schools and so forth. So the school board really does matter. It's not just a sort of. A perfunctory rubber stamp kind of behind the scenes organization. And so whether you're going to be a running for school board or participating in elections, I really encourage you to, to look seriously. At the school board and how you can help it help your community be better.
Okay. Thank you, Ziad. Finally, we have Kate Nazimi and Kate will be talking about what community members and voters can do to get involved. Kate.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I was, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's imagine, next slide. This standardization teach to the test, a narrowing and culling of curriculum. Uncurious, uninspired learning environment. Next slide. Or this vibrant learning communities, adaptability and flexibility, collaboration, partnership, fun. Next slide. This. Political divisiveness outsiders restricting access to good books for all students. Opinion in favor of professional library collection standards and norms, forgotten emphasis on literacy. Or this. Libraries filled with fascinating, great books for every kid that accord with each student's interest, age level and values. Chosen with guidance from that child's parents. Next slide. Which matches your vision? My name is Kate Nazimi and I'm a parent in Central Bucks. I'm a co-founder of Advocates for Inclusive Education along with Catherine Semish. A retired English teacher of 27 years in Central Bucks. We're a nonpartisan issue-based community group founded in 2022 to fight for kids in schools. Our goal is to inform the greater community of the issues impacting education and to motivate others to get involved. Many times it's as simple as looking at what's happening. And asking your friends and your neighbors and your acquaintances and your relatives to look at it too. We're facing a national tidal wave of restrictions against teachers, books and freedoms for students. We're seeing this in the form of policies that seek to restrict what teachers, what teachers can and can't say. Do, support or advocate for. And policies that most certainly tilt toward book removal. Particularly problematic is that parents already had the power to restrict books and anything they find objectionable in the curriculum. For their own children. It's Pennsylvania law. However, these policies are exclusively about restricting books and content from other people's kids. We believe America's greatness and prosperity grow out of the inclusive excellence of our public schools. That prepare our kids for a world of future possibilities. Next slide. We believe all kids deserve a healthy, safe and equitable education that fosters broad inquiry and exploration. Successful public schools are places where kids have the freedom to read, the freedom to learn. And the ability to engage in honest conversations about the world around them. School boards guided by educational best practices must advocate for the health. The safety and the well-being for all students and work together to prepare kids to be successful. And to grow up to be responsible adults. So our, so our schools can become vibrant learning communities and sources of pride and unity in our community. We have learned that leading with our vision keeps us focused on a compelling destination. While we speak out against harmful school board policies. It's important to have your eyes on the prize and it helps unite people too. Next slide. We engage in lots of communication, research. And fresh perspective. In response to needing one massive repository for all of the school board related information. Last year, we built a website in July. It covers pages on the issues, including individual pages on each policy with professional analysis. And public letters of concern from over 17 organizations. We also have a page where we summarize our monthly board meetings. We have a page about our vision. We have pages with resources for parents and students. On ways to take action, including petition signing. We have a news page and we also have a blog where we post commentary. For those that are interested, they subscribe to a weekly newsletter that we publish that comes out into your email. We use that as a way to communicate the latest issues of the week and also as a call to action. We also have a Facebook page and some Twitter posts. And we write editorials, which is a great way to get the information out to the larger public. And again, we have support from over 17 organizations in the work that we do. So if you're interested, I encourage you to go to affybox.org. On the homepage, you can enter your email address and hit subscribe and then you'll have. All the information you'd ever want to know about Central Bucks School District coming to you once weekly. Next slide. We are building community and we do this by encouraging people to come to the school board meetings that are once monthly. And to share their concerns publicly or to support the students, the teachers, parents and other community members who are speaking out. We host online events. These are primarily to discuss. New policies that are being proposed in the district and to try to understand them better. Those events, we invite. Professionals like. Researchers and advocates and attorneys from the Education Law Center and the ACLU. We host in-person town halls. Where we have about a 45 minute presentation. We talk about our vision extensively. And we delve into the leadership, leadership structure in Central Bucks. And the issues that we're facing with the policies. And then we conclude with our vision and a call to action about some immediate steps people could take. We host smaller neighborhood house parties. Those are just more personable events where we just kind of talk to people and encourage them to leave and talk to three people, three more people that might not know about the issues. And coming soon, since it's an election year, we will be. Providing nonpartisan voter education in the form of candidate guides, forums and deep canvassing this summer. Next slide. So again, that vision of vibrant learning, learning community that fosters learning and belonging for all our kids. And we emphasize all of them, every single one of them, whoever they are, period. Next slide. That's one of our high schools graduation and I'll conclude by saying. We are building our reach and our power to transcend the political divisions. To advocate for the best education for all close to 18,000 students in Central Bucks. And to promote great inclusive schools and healed communities throughout our region. We hope we can join together to resist restrictive, anti-intellectual and discriminatory policies to support all the kids. 100% of them to discover their highest potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, let's have all of our panelists. Back. In view. And we will be working our way through some questions that our participants have shared. I want to. Start by saying that the first question that I saw was, what's the best way to learn the bio of each person running for school board? I, I did want to again. Reference our League of Women Voters, vote411.org where you can find how these. Candidates have responded to specific questions asked to them by the league. If they did. Respond to the questions, those answers will be there. They're not there yet, but they will be ahead of the primary. Kate, did you want to comment and a little bit more about that?
Sure. So similar to the league, we're also. Will also be developing a set of questions to. Send out to all of the candidates. We know who, we know all of the candidates because they filed, it was a week ago. And once they have. You know, some candidates have websites that are ready to go. Others were sort of waiting to see how they're going to announce themselves on social media. Or on a website. Once that happens. Through our newsletter, we will provide everybody with all of the candidates' information. Like basically their website links and their Facebook links so that they can learn for them themselves. And we really do encourage. Everyone to, to reach out to the candidates and ask them the questions that they would like to know the answers to. I mean. Especially the students who's, who really. Have a primary stake in who's going to be representing them on the board. It's their education. So I think, I think it's just a matter of time before we get everybody's. Web presence known and out there to people, but that's probably the best way. To get to know.
Great, go ahead.
Say, in a typical school district, school board candidates aren't going to have a website. They may have a Facebook page, but typically you're not going to be able to know who these people are unless you actually go to the county website. Find out who, find out who's going to be on the ballot and then do your own research. So that is, you know what I mean? That is the reality of, of these types of races in smaller communities. And so it's really not that hard to do it, but it is very worth it because if you get people on board. Central Bucks. Ended up getting five, if you have five people on a school board and they have an agenda. They can do whatever the heck they want. They have the power to do anything that they want on a school board with five votes. Correct? My school board member friends, like you can't stop them. And so when you have five people up for election in a, in a year like this. You are risking having five people come on with an agenda that you do not agree with, that your community does not agree with, that you don't want. But if people don't take the time to figure out who they are and get people out to the polls, you can end up with that situation very easily. And I think that we can expect that to happen in communities where people aren't paying attention.
Let me just ask you, Susan, will that website, the, the county website specify the party of individual candidates?
I do not believe so. No.
Okay, there was a question about, is it possible to find out the party of the candidates? Does anybody know?
You can request, all this data is public, so you can request from your county board of elections. A list of all of the registered voters in your school board district. And you can then get that list of registered voters. That does a couple of things for you, can help you figure out what party the candidates are in. And then it also helps you know who there is in your district that you can talk to. If you want to be able to help a candidate get elected, then you've got a list of all the voters. And you can just take that and you can go to town with it and, and you can really work on increasing voter turnout.
Okay. Jennifer, did you want to comment?
I think that. A one-issue school board director candidate is about the most dangerous thing. That can happen to your school district. There is so much a school board director has to do. If a person is only willing. To work on one issue, one hot button, one anything. Then it's not good. And it really doesn't matter what that one thing is. You know, it could be as extreme as book banning, or it can be as extreme as I want a new athletic field. There is so much work to do as a school board director. And to Susan's point. It's five and go. So if they get five folks to vote together. Don't do the, and I've seen it happen. They have no idea what they're voting on. They have no idea the learned term implications. They raise their hand. And it happens around budget all the time. We fixate and that's like. The most pleasant thing it can happen around. They fixate on, we're only going to raise taxes this much. They all say yes to 1.1. The superintendent really needs 2.5. And now the superintendent has to leave and cut a million dollars worth of stuff. And then the school board directors go, why'd you cut that? And they go, you left me a million short. What was I gonna do? Right? So a one can, a one-issue candidate is brutal. Brutal.
Okay. We had a question about school board oversight. Is there school board oversight within the Commonwealth, either through the Department of Education or any other entity?
So new is that school board directors must do mandatory education. So new is that school board directors must do mandatory education. Also new is they're not really tracking it well, and there's no punishment. They cannot kick elective official off. Now, we all do audits for schools. There is a portion of that audit that talks about school board directors. In my school district, they talk about how we don't raise taxes enough, and our fund balance is far too low and makes us a really bad financial risk. But no, there is no oversight.
Okay. We have a question about collaboration. Do Pennsylvania school boards network or collaborate on various topics that they may be collectively?
Right. So I just answered that, but in short, through PSBA, Pennsylvania School Board Association, they offer trainings. They offer collabora- collaborations. Interestingly enough, not really on this side of the state, but there are educational opportunities. The I'm sorry, the intermediate units also get school board directors together, whether it's their their IU representative, each school district has one, or like my Delaware County has a legislative council that I share on. So there are absolutely ways to learn how to do your job better. Absolutely.
Okay. Ziad, would you be willing to comment on why perhaps school boards have become so partisan and political?
I mean, there's lots of reasons. I mean, number one, I just want to sort of echo, elevate, champion what Jennifer said about, you know, beware of one-trick ponies. You know, the candidates for school board who have a single ax to grind can just grind everything to a halt for everyone, and it doesn't, as she said, it doesn't matter what their issue is. Sometimes it's very partisan and having to do with national politics in some weird way. Sometimes it can be super local, you know, like a like an athletic field or something. And it always ends up hurting the community to have those people on the board. Why the the boards have become the subject of so much partisan debate, and I say subject because, you know, there's lots of school boards who are under lots of partisan pressure but are not themselves particularly partisan. They've resisted that. You know, that that pressure. I think one reason is that they're accessible. I think that there's a lot of frustration with national and state politics right now. We have 500 school boards around the state, you know, that are meeting once, twice or more a month, and it's really easy for people to come and vent their frustrations. And some of those people then end up deciding that, you know, they can do it better. They can do it better than the teachers. They can do it better than the superintendent. They can do it better than the the school board members there. And so they're really, they're really channeling larger frustration with our national politics onto our school boards in really in really negative ways. I mean, I think the other reason is simply that schools have always been a place where adults have wanted in the United States to fight their, you know, about politics. And that's one of the, I think, one of the purposes of a board, hopefully, is to protect a community and its schools from that, those kinds of fights. But, you know, there have been long, you know, for a very long time, people have tried to impose their particular point of view, not just on their own families, but on everyone's families. And when when you have these small districts in which there's not a lot of information about the candidates, you know, it can be, it can be really tempting to say, well, let's take over a school board. And then you make the news, and if you're, you know, if you're, if that's, if that looks, if that's what success looks like for you, that you get to be on, you know, podcasts and talk show hosts, you know, talk shows and so forth, talking about how you, you know, you showed them, then, you know, you, it attracts those people. And let me say one other thing. I mean, what, this is something that worries me a lot, which is that as it has, as there has been more and more incivility around school boards, I worry that regular people won't run for school board, and you will only get what is really the extremes in our society and also the people who want to, who think of an elected job like this as going to combat over sort of ideology. And it's, you know, even, like, even when you're talking about controversial issues in a school board, it's seldom maps very easily on to Democrat or Republican or particular ideologies. I mean, the issues at a school board are just too complex. They're too local to sort of fit that mold. And so I think it's really important to vote for people and to find people to run for office that, you know, don't fall into this, you know, the the sort of chattering classes who want to just fight, and they want to insult, and they want to, you know, throw memes at each other and so forth. And so that goes a little beyond your question, Kathy, because it has to do with the, you know, the sort of effect of partisanship. But, you know, this is a, this is a real big danger. It's why we need more people of goodwill, regardless of their point of view on various issues, who can, you know, get together in a civil way and with respect, not only for their colleagues, but for the diversity that exists in their community and do what's best for our kids and and our local communities.
I can tell you, just to add to that, there are people that are very, very nervous about who is gonna really want to be a school board director in the future. Yes, we're afraid of the one issue, but this is a heck of a volunteer job. I love it. My family has adjusted to it. But it costs time, and because you're away from your desk, you're not making probably as much in your career as you would have thought. And like there, like Cerisi has a bill to get us health insurance. Like, like, they are very, very afraid that we will run out of school board directors for 501 districts.
Okay. Susan, would you mind commenting on the superintendent's role, if you would, in on the school board and the meetings and how that position influences what's happening in the school board?
Jennifer, do you want to take that one?
Sure. What I said to that one is superintendent would be responsible for agenda with input from committees, their super report and answering any questions. Board president runs the meeting.
Okay. And how about the solicitor?
Keeping us legal within lines, not letting us break sunshine and review of contracts and things like that.
Okay.
A good one or a bad one could make a huge difference. Right? That solicitor should reflect your body's sort of sensibilities.
Okay. Kate, would you like to comment on how you formed the organization that you founded and the value of of that organization's work?
Sure. I'll start by saying I did not intend to form an organization at all. I just, like a lot of other people who get involved in this, I was just at a school board meeting back in January of 2022 or February, and that was when our library coordinator was presenting a very sound library policy to the school board for consideration, and she was met with hostility and condemnation, and I was blown away. And so the way I started, and I, that's actually where I met Catherine Semish at that meeting. And we just kind of kept coming back and back and back to the meetings, and I didn't know anything about the library policy, so I just did my own research, and I asked for the policy, and I asked for her presentation. So I just kind of was curious, and I ended up learning a lot. And then to me, I definitely had the whiffs of potential future censorship. So I sent it off to the ACLU and the Education Law Center, and I just happened to have early, quick success connecting with folks there who were able to meet with me and kind of help help me better understand the policy that was eventually being proposed and so on. And so it just kind of grew from there. You know, meeting more people at the meetings, and then as we talked, everyone sort of realized that we were off in our own little splinter worlds. I was not on social media, but people were getting information from all over the place. So that's where the website kind of came. We decided that would be a great hub to kind of, it's like an encyclopedia, like storehouse of everything. I mean, it takes a lot of time and effort to populate the content and keep it updated and to do the research and work with analysts and kind of come up with communications. So that's when we decided to go for nonprofit status to see if we could get some grants and some funding to help us do, you know, so I could basically not work full-time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd just like to ask any of our panelists if they would like to make another comment before we wrap it up.
I would just like to say that in school districts, this is going to be by far the most consequential election you can ever vote in, and I am like not overstating that one tiny bit. We have a, we have a statewide organization that's monitoring school boards and what's happening, and what we are seeing is that these things that are happening in Central Bucks are popping up all over the state. There is a network of people who are running to do just what Ziad, Ziad, I'm sorry that I can't said, Dr. Monson, exactly what Dr. Monson said.
I go by Ziad.
Ziad, exactly what Ziad said. There, this is exactly what is happening. If you are not paying attention and your neighbors are not paying attention, you can expect to see people who want to destroy your public schools take over your school board, and I am not exaggerating one tiny bit. So do your work and make sure you know who you're voting for and get people out to vote.
Jennifer asked this question, Jennifer already answered this question in the in the text, but Barbara had asked about what what role independents play in school board elections, particularly in primaries, and I mean, she, it's right, they don't play any role. I actually wanted to share my story, which is that I was registered as an independent until I ran for school board. And that was one of the things that inspired me was a sort of realization that in many communities, you don't get a voice because of the way Pennsylvania handles school board elections unless you register for a party. And so, you know, I was forced by the election laws to register for a party. And, you know, I think schools, I think our public schools are important enough that others should consider that as well. You can be an independent, but still you need to, you know, use the laws that that were given in Pennsylvania, and that means if you want to vote in the primaries in your school board elections, you need to pick the the party where you think you can make the most influence and do that. And I know there are partisans who will hate me saying that, but, you know, I see it as very instrumental, and this, this, our schools are our community resources, and they come first to me. So that's why I changed from being an independent.
Yeah, and that's, it's super unfortunate that in Pennsylvania, independents don't vote in any primary for anything. So if there's a hot-button question for judges or anything else, they don't get a say, and and really someone should look at that law. Now, there has been conversation on a school board level about taking politics out of school board and not having a Ds and Rs, and that fails miserably, but there's always hope.
Okay. Right. I did want to respond to Eric's question about a league stance on a particular school board candidate, and just remind you that the league does not take positions on any individual candidates or parties. And I think we're about to wrap up our conversation this evening. So just want to say thank you very much once again to our panelists this evening, Susan, Jennifer, Ziad and Kate, and thanks to everybody who tuned in and participated in this evening's webinar. And we urge you to spread the word about the importance of school board elections. Educate yourself about the candidates. Please go to vote411.org to see how candidates responded to our questions. Look for other opportunities to learn about the candidates, and please vote in the municipal primary on Tuesday, May 16. Finally, we invite you to join the League of Women Voters of Bucks County in our work to empower voters and defend democracy. Thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good day.